...open the meeting. I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight, not last night. That's right, alright. We're gonna do a roll call first. Russ?
Russ Holden, Superintendent.
We'll start over with, we'll start with Ray in the back corner. Ray, you never get your kudos.
Ray Taylor, librarian, high school. Shaun Moynihan, principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Megan Reed, assistant principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Jody Bergen, principal, Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Jackie Bolch, student representative.
Ed Anderson, school board.
Paul Scarron, school board.
Russ Holden, Superintendent.
Jesse Tyler, school board.
Kelly Westles, business administrator.
Thank you. April Royce is absent this evening and is sick. And Brian Garland is out of country. We have a quorum with the three of us. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. If we can all stand, take the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, our independence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of meditation, please. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of the school board meeting minutes. The minutes of the January 10 budget hearing and the minutes of the January 10 school board meeting. But prior to accepting a motion, there has been a request from the public that letters be entered in as minutes. And I want to have a discussion with the board to talk about whether we're going to allow this to occur now and in the future. I'm gonna throw it to Russ right now to talk about some of the pitfalls and some of the benefits.
Sure, so we had two requests at the last meeting to have things be put into the minutes. Now, the minutes are the school board official minutes. We have a secretary that takes those minutes. And the things that have to be recorded in those minutes are recorded votes and who voted on what, motions made. There, we have in the past practice when people have asked to make changes to our minutes based upon something that was said, looked at those changes, the board has voted yes or no whether to make those changes. In the December meeting, a letter was read and asked to be put in the minutes. The secretary in the minutes put, "The letter will be put into the minutes." So she put that in the minutes. By doing so, I felt that we were obligated to put the letter that was read into the minutes. Moving forward, after speaking with the secretary, I said they should be, those are requests, because the board is the only person who approves and puts things into its minutes. So now you have a request to put some things in your minutes. I just caution you on, I'm gonna go back to freedom of speech and viewpoint discrimination. So if you decide to allow people to put letters that they read into your minutes, you could potentially start a precedent that if that's what people do, that you're just gonna allow them to do that. If there's something that's read, or a letter that's read that you don't want in your minutes and you say no, you could be potentially accused of viewpoint discrimination. So I just think you need to think about the practice before you make a decision on allowing, and what gets allowed to be added to your minutes and what isn't allowed to be added to your minutes. What practice you want to start to put in place.
Go ahead, Ed.
Two questions on that. One, if the people are reading the minutes, then they're being put in by, I assume, what they're reading is being entered in or no, it's just what we're reading?
No, so somebody, when you read our minutes, you'll see, Russ Holden came to the microphone and read a statement.
Right.
You won't necessarily read, get the entire statement. Now, again, it's on the videotape, which is on YouTube, but that's not our official minutes.
Right.
Our official minutes is what you're gonna approve.
I was gonna say, downside of that is what is being read might not be what's actually in the minutes. So if you put them into the minutes, there may be information that we perceive as being read by the public but is actually not what's being read by the public, which could be information that wasn't shared at that meeting that is now part of a public record. Kind of tossed on it.
Jesse, do you have anything to add?
I understand the push for it, but I don't. There's an agenda that's decided, policy that's followed. To be able to have a letter come in to the official minutes, for somebody who doesn't watch the video, depending on what's in the letter, that can skew what was actually discussed at the meeting, what the agenda plan was, and risks going outside of what's okay to talk about in a meeting. So I think there's a lot of reason for caution with making that a precedent. That's my own opinion aside from, you know, the different balance point. That's just, I was uncomfortable with, you know, this is the letter and it has to be in the minutes. I don't, I haven't experienced that in my prior experience on a board. That's not how it works. So for me, that was uncomfortable and unfamiliar, but I was in a different, I was in Vermont, not New Hampshire. So that's my feeling on it.
Policy, what do we have to policy?
So I meant policy, this talks about following 91A, which is the running rule of the meeting. And that you mean, your minutes need to be posted for inspection as a draft five days after a business. And if they're non-public and they're unsold at 72 hours.
And our instructions to our secretary are to get the...
Motions, the votes.
Motions, the votes and...
Try to capture.
Capture the essence of the meeting, but not verbatim as it would be if you were in a court of law where there's a scribe, there was a trans, instead of, do a transcript. Ed, do you have anything else you want to add? Jesse?
No, I just think that it risks taking away from the focus of the agenda and what the discussions were. So I respect the push for it, but I personally am not comfortable with it.
Okay. Having had that discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the January 10 budget hearing. One of you two has to make a motion, because this is three of us.
I'll make a motion to accept the January 10 minutes.
I'll second.
Second, Jesse. Any discussion, additions, alterations, corrections? Approved as read, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No objection, so it passes. Next on our list is the minutes of the January 10, 2018, school board meeting. Not any motion.
Motion to approve the school board minutes.
Can I make a comment before you want his motion, just so you have clarity? The minutes that are in front of you do not have, that you're voting on do not have the letter in.
Okay, that's Jesse's motion. You can tell Jesse.
Just so you understand that.
Yeah, I didn't see it in there.
Okay.
So same motion, motion is to approve the school board minutes.
Thank you.
As presented.
I'll second.
Second, Ed. Any discussion, alterations, additions, corrections? Hearing none, call for a vote, all is in favor. Signify the same, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Good notes.
Next is the agenda review. Do we have to add or delete anything from this agenda? Next on my list is public forum. Public forum, this portion is agenda only. For those people in the audience that wish to speak to agenda items, the microphone's there. Three minutes, 15 minutes total. Seeing a movement to the microphone, I'll close the public meeting. Next, presentation, 2017 youth risk behavior survey reviewed by Shaun Moynihan. You have the floor.
Excellent, thank you. I'll sit here, but I'm gonna bring a few sheets up to the board. Jack Cannon, you get in. So as the talk reads, this is a pretty comprehensive list of behaviors, good behaviors. The Sunapee Middle High School, 9th through 12th graders took the youth risk behavior survey in the spring of 2017 and provided below as a summary of the results. One thing that made it a little more difficult this year is in the past, 2015 was much easier to find the state averages. This year, they didn't have them in some, and on some, they'd have a symbol for it, but it put you a little risk of not quite having exactly correct. So I tried to be careful of giving direct specifics on it. I'll start with the alcohol use behavior. Indicators among Sunapee students remain at or near the state averages. You know, one of the pauses that we took is that from the last survey, the indicators primarily decreased. An example I gave was first time use of alcohol under 13 decreased from 9.4 to 6.5 percent. And there was also a decrease in students reported drinking at least one day during the past 30 days. However, I say that, even though it's below the state average, it's still much higher than we'd like to see, 37 percent. Also, as you see, 21 percent of students drank five or more drinks at least once in the past 30 days in the spring of 2017. So, you know, I think it tells us a couple of things. You know, the indicators are more positive than they were two years ago, but still an area of concern for us. And again, one of the difficulties was that they would give some information from 2015 to not 2017, but it's important, certainly at our numbers, and they're higher than we'd like them to be, but moving in the right direction. Bullying behavior was interesting. Again, the only comparative data we could find pertained to students who were bullied on school property during the past 12 months. Again, the data indicated a decrease from our last survey, which was in 2015. It went from 22 percent to 18 percent, 18.9 percent, I'm sorry. In 2015, the reports were lower than the state average, but we didn't have the 2017 data. So it was relatively limited comparative data for bullying. But again, it was moving in the right direction and is below the state average. Moving down to drug use behavior. Again, all indicators are that students are either near, at, or in most instances below these 2015 state averages. Comparable Sunapee data has decreased from 2015, but still certainly areas of concern. We had 20.3 percent of students reporting using marijuana in the past 30 days. It's lower than it was in 2015, but still higher than we'd like it to be.
Can I ask a question on that?
Absolutely.
I'm curious, because workplaces are trying to get their hands around this with Maine, coming online. We're kind of surrounded. Massachusetts, Vermont. What's sort of the outlook? What's, what's did men, you know, the staff's expectation as? The unthinkable when we were the, you know, high school age of the, of being marijuana being legal. Sort of, it's coming, so just curious for some of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, my thoughts are, it makes it very difficult. You know, it makes it difficult when some of the signals are that it's not that big a deal. You know, and again, we have seen a lot of states in the area have started to either, I won't say legalize it, but certainly decriminalize it. So I think that that has, you know, had a negative impact for our students. We try to temper that or work with, you know, I think one of the positives we still have is how many students participate in co-op work. And we should talk about that. The messages are sent on just, okay, it might, it might not be illegal, or it might not be greatly illegal, but the impact that it has. And there's been a lot of work that's been done on just, you know, how much it decreases on gains you've made in other ways. But it certainly does have a negative impact.
Yeah, it's just an interesting conundrum for education and workplaces.
Well, we're getting, you know, some of the things, some of the increases we're gonna see right now, for instance, on the tobacco use. There was no state data that we could find on that. We had an increase of students who smoked a cigar. But, you know, a point of concern at the very bottom under tobacco use would be the percent of students who have ever used an electronic vape product in their life. And that is way up, and I am surprised not at all with that. So this year in particular has been cases where, up in here, this is my 14th year, and one of the things that's always been kind of nice is we haven't had to worry about going into the bathroom and, you know, smelling cigarette smoke or anything like that. But we have noticed that there has been, you know, at times, students have used vaping products in the bathroom. And some people could ask, what do you attribute that to? And I'd say, you know, drive through a town, you know, and see how many stores have, you know, that you're seeing springing up and things along those lines. We've got to do a better job of education on that. I think you have a fair amount of students who have tried that and really don't think there's any danger of that. But that's, that's an area where we saw an increase, and that's when we, we can certainly see that in schools. Four years ago, if you'd ask me, do you think your students are vaping in the bathrooms? I'd say, no, I really haven't seen any evidence of that. If you ask me that this year, I'd say absolutely, I've seen evidence of that this year.
Yeah, their marketing is shamelessly targeted at kids.
Absolutely. Yep, we've, Mr. Holden was involved one day this year where I was, I became much more educated on it as I was pulling it apart and finding, it smelled like cotton candy. There's a reason it smelled like cotton candy, but it was cotton candy flavored.
Nicotine.
Yeah, nicotine. And so again, you ask yourself, who would that be targeted to? It's a pretty easy answer to have. So I see that as being something that we're going to be dealing with more often as we look at that. Again, we had difficulty finding first state data for the sexual and dating violence. There was a decrease in sexual and dating violence over the past 12 months. The 2015 numbers went from 14 percent to 7.6 percent. There was an increase in unprotected sexual behavior, but a slight decrease in students who were sexually active in the most recent three months prior to the survey. So mixed results on that. The youth risk survey indicated that Sunapee High School students rank below the state averages relative to students who feel sad, helpless, or consider suicide. All indicators for this portion of the survey are not only below the 2015 state average, but also in general decline. But a couple of points of interest, percentage of students who purposely hurt themselves without wanting to die decreased from 15.4 percent to 14.6 percent. But still, obviously, numbers are a concern. Those numbers are lower than the state average. It was interesting, Mrs. Reed has a little information later on, but we had, we had a speaker come in to speak about mental illness to our entire student body a couple of weeks ago. He actually followed a phone call to me and was just sharing a lot of positive attributes, but, you know, sharing some of the numbers he's seen throughout the state on that as well. The percent of students who felt sad or hopeless decreased from 21 to 18 percent, and the percent of students who seriously considered suicide did increase from 9.4 percent to 10.6 percent. Vehicle data, good news is our students wear seatbelts. It was very rare that they would ride in their car without a seatbelt. But 20 percent did report driving a car with someone who'd been drinking, which is down from 2015. And probably not surprising, even though it's down, 46 percent of students, this is one of the ones that really concerns us, either texted or emailed while driving in 2017. And I kind of try to pay attention sometimes when I'm on the highway. I'm always shocked by the percentage of people who are not just driving their car. So it's, that's probably lower. I often say if I drive by 10 people, 10 cars, five of them are, have their head in their laps and so on. Your student numbers indicate that, but something certainly, you know, concerns us. Overall health indicators, no state comparable data. Sunapee data indicated there was an increase in students reporting not having a checkup or physical. However, healthy behaviors and dietary behaviors for Sunapee students are better than 2015 state averages. In general, our students are physically active, eating a healthy diet. Again, not shockingly, what aired concern is the amount of computer, phone, and screen time. There was an increase of students who played a video or computer game for more than three hours a day. That went from 36 percent to over 51 percent. That doesn't surprise me. A lot of students who are attached to their electronic devices. As are a lot of adults. There is a tremendous amount of data, but tried to take a little sampling of each different area. I believe Mr. Holden is somewhat kind of gonna put the entire survey up, but that's a, that's a sampling. It certainly be, well, many questions.
Does the board have any?
I asked, what I did. I was just curious on the higher numbers, sort of the obvious ones to look at with the vaping. You know, specific plan, is that gets, that's, it's along the lines of marijuana. They're not supposed to have access to it, but it's targeted them like when Camel gave out Camel backpacks to kids. It's just the next version of that. You know, what, and these can explode and they're also taking...
Yeah, I think one of the positive things, it'll be interesting to see where the turn comes, but, you know, obviously more educational help as we go through the health and those are things that, you know, for instance, last year we didn't even have that in our policy. And this year really quickly was, okay, now we need to get this into the policy. It's happened pretty quickly. So I think more educational help, I also think, you know, realistically, if somebody went into the bathroom and smoked marijuana, you know, or cigarettes, you're able to find that out pretty quickly. The vaping, not as much, but, you know, there have been a couple of circumstances now where students have been caught. It does serve as a deterrent, quite frankly, you know, we say that with alcohol. When a student gets caught with alcohol, the next two or three months, you're literally gonna have a decrease in that behavior. So we certainly hope to see a decrease in it. It's kind of caught up to us relatively quickly on that one, because this was the first year. Whereas, again, if this summer, when you say, how much does this concern you? My answer probably would have been, not tremendous amount, I haven't seen much. And my answer would be, this year.
You two need to be aware that they now sell products with marijuana THC for vaping. That has a very sweet smell that you're not gonna smell your normal.
Exactly, which just makes it much more challenging. And again, that's where, you know, this year we've had circumstances, again. A teacher will come to me, why does the bathroom smell like cotton candy? Three months ago, I would say, I had no idea, where now I would have a good idea of why it smells like that.
So now armed with a survey and this information, we have our athletic handbook, which I think extends to the other extracurriculars as well.
It does, yep.
Health class, what are we doing daily to get in front of kids?
Well, I would think daily would be the health, the health class. That's what we're doing, you know.
That's where, that's where the information, where the education is being given.
That's the education that comes on a daily basis, though, in fairness, not for every student, because not everybody takes house every semester and every year. From an athletic handbook standpoint, we had a, we had a period where we needed to do a better job of education, but that has now happened. I can say that because we had an incident where it wasn't clearly delineated for them, and then we've had other incidents since then where it was very clear.
I was gonna say, I have a little bit there. We started the community conversations group last year, and out of that group was folks in the community, police department and school department. Came a great day in April, Red Ribbon Week, our health classes put that together. Working with Chief K Hill this year as well. Once this report got pushed out tonight, gonna bring that group back together. And what we're going to do is put something together for the community. So last year it was in school. We're gonna look to do something maybe on a weekend for the community, so the whole community can be involved in hearing about, hearing about vaping, hearing about the marijuana laws out there. What does it feel like to drive a golf cart with impaired glasses? Sort of giving people those opportunities from a bigger community standpoint. And I'm reiterating that word, community. The education has to come across, not just from the school, but from the community. Parents need to be involved. And so one of our big pushes by taking this survey is just that, to give information to the entities in this community so they can take some action as well. It's just not a school issue. And let's go back quickly on the vaping. So legal drinking age, legal age in which you can smoke, foofling, and there would be no more legislation regarding marijuana, legal age. Doesn't mean it's not broken, but it's still illegal to do in school for a student. And I think that's sort of where we get to impose, no, yes, it may be legal, but it's not legal for you to have nicotine under the age of 18.
Well, I was gonna say, if the law passes on marijuana, it's legalized, it's still gonna be illegal for kids 18 and under.
Is it 18 and under?
18, not 21.
So that helps us a little better than it helps you in your industry.
Right, no, absolutely. And again, businesses are finding their way in a hurry as well, with some surprises. They're just thinking of being able to talk openly about the role of the school and what we can be responsible for, and in part with education, but also, I think, part of the role, you know, our role is with this kind of, you know, 49 percent or whatever, let me cut up again, helping share the resources so that families, in whatever form kids have for families, know more to look for. Because I think some of the numbers in here for people are gonna be a real shock. This stuff just happens in neighboring towns, it doesn't happen here. So I think having that concerted, you know, partner way of addressing it, I think is great. Thanks.
Thank you. Jody, I'm gonna just ask a couple, maybe just one, maybe a follow-up question. What are we doing at the elementary school in addition to DARE? Are we doing, are we linking the high school to the elementary school with some of these things that Shaun has talked about?
Not particularly. Bonnie does some health-related stuff. You know, she does heart health and things like that, but we don't have a concerted effort between the elementary, aside, you know, DARE is really what we do.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Thank you very much. Moving on. Updates with our schools. We'll start off with Jackie Bolch.
All right, so...
Jackie, you have the floor.
So ski seasons are coming to an end. The boys varsity alpine ski championship is on Monday at Moon. And on Tuesday is the girls varsity ski team championship, and that is at Sunapee. So if anybody wanted to go, we're there all day. But in other news, the play has cast and have begun rehearsals for the play Tom Sawyer. And those nights will be the 22nd and the 23rd, they will be putting on the show. And there's a lot of kids that join this time. I know a lot of kids that play sports or don't typically do other extracurricular activities joined this time. So it's a large group that are on this show this time. The DI teams in the middle school are getting ready for their regional meet on March 17. I know my little sister's on it and she's all pumped up for it, talking about how excited they all are. So they're all really excited about that. And then next Friday, the honor roll students are, have the ability to go to a hockey game up at Dartmouth. And there's been a lot of chatter about that. Everybody seems pretty excited. That's one of the more likable honorable trips that everybody seems to go to, but something like that.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions from the board, Jack?
When was the, when was the home for the girls team?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
If you email Jack Agapino and wanna help volunteer at the race, you can do some help.
Okay, Sunapee Elementary School, Jody.
We had our spelling bee on January 23, and the winner was fifth grader Adriana Cangis. She and runner-up Jordan Roosevelt went back and forth for several rounds, and Adriana correctly spelled llama, the spiritual leader, not the pachyderm, one L at the beginning. Winter activities ended today. Everybody had a great time. We had some out-of-the-box activities, including ice fishing. Kids went ice fishing today. Woodworking, some robotics, cake decorating, lots of different stuff, as well as the usual skiing and snowboard. And students and staff participated in the Great Kindness Challenge at the end of last month. Students created posters encouraging kindness and placing them around the school. And then individual students kept track of the kind of acts that they completed and used a checklist to check those off, and they were recognized in an assembly at the end of the week.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
No, that's great.
Thank you, Jody. Move up the hill to Sunapee Middle High School.
As Shaun mentioned, on January 23, Justice, former Chief Justice Brogdon came and spoke with our students about recognizing the signs of mental health, as well as how to seek help for themselves or their fellow students. It was very well received. We had six scholar athletes recognized and conquered. We had six scholar athletes recognized and conquered earlier. Coming February twenty-third, we have our annual college and career fair. This year, the emphasis is on soft skills. So we have a number of guest speakers coming in to run sessions on that Friday morning from ten to noon, and then we'll have a school by lunch, and some student council up to noon. And we have a blood drive that the service club is putting on on March seventh, that's open to the community, it's from one to six P.M., and they are encouraging everyone to come and see the hall. So there's a link that you can follow to sign up, and you can also come out there.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, I'm a coworker and I are going to be presenters at the soft skills fair, so that's going to be fun to see it from the inside.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, moving on to superintendent update. Russ?
Just again, Chief Justice Broderick, we hadn't had an opportunity to hear his, his presentation. I believe it's still on our YouTube channel, he presented down the library for the police department and the community, I believe we videotaped him, it's on our YouTube channel. You know, two hundred and fifty kids could hear pinned up, it just, it hits home, it hits home, and the affect in the room for a lot of our students was very real. The Commission of Education was also with him, and he has a little, has a little sort of presentation that goes with that. It was a stormy day, so unfortunately he had to get back, but typically he does a tour, takes a look at the building, takes a look at your schools, so he promised we could come back at some point in time, so we're looking forward to his visit. Just had the opportunity to go to a legislative session, a legislative review, there are over a hundred and one pieces of legislation that are potentially either on the floor or being looked at, anywhere from, anything from adequacy and funding, assessment, accountability, school choice, homeschool, charter schools, like to know, Department of Education, State Board, cooperative school districts, the list goes on and on and on and on. If folks haven't been paying attention, I hope that you do, because I think there are a lot of really interesting pieces of legislation. Some of them, depending on your perspective, could be positive, some of them, depending on your perspective, could be negative. But I think there's an important thing to look at, you need to look at all pieces of legislation and try to make some, some comparisons on where they start to connect, because I think there were some things being done, I don't think, I know there were some things being done that I think folks at public schools and public education, support public education, need to look at. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with private education or charter schools, I think all those things have places, but I just think there's lots of pieces of legislation right now that have a target towards public education. They just ask people to be attentive and to be knowledgeable, and if you have questions with the things I can share with you, please let me know, and that includes people in the audience as well. I'm happy to share whatever I can with you. I'll be sending out an email to the board members that will have the superintendent's evaluation and the school board evaluation. I know our board makeup will be changing after March, but I wanted all the members who are seated on the board to have an opportunity to give input towards my evaluation, which the board in April will review, but also to give some feedback to the board itself and the members of the board, and so we'll collect all that. It'll be sent through email, you can fill out it right online and then send it back to Kathy, and she'll have everything together calibrated and tallied and resulted, we'll come at another time. And that is it. Oh, one last piece, I didn't mention, Deanna Dolan is the substance misuse prevention and marketing coordinator for the council of the county, was on a conference call with her, Jackie Watkins, goes back to the drug and alcohol piece. Teen Institute is trying to, is writing thirteen regional public health networks to try to engage parents in conversation regarding some of these issues. And so we offered the library, we offered the town library, but hopefully we'll be hearing about one of these Saturdays that'll either happen in London or here or in the Newport area, where we're trying to get parents together to have some more dialogue regarding some of the issues arguing are facing. That is it.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments? Good, hearing none, we'll move on to our strategic plan update. Again, from Russ.
Nope, it's going to come from the folks over there, and Jody, I'm handing out Jody's handout, so Jody, do you want to give us enough to say? It'd be great.
So I've provided you with kind of an update on what we're doing in each of the different goals that we have at the elementary school. On our last professional development day on January sixteenth, we spent the whole day digging into the strategic plan and goal number one, which is competency-based education. For competencies, we developed a common understanding of what they are, what we want students to know and be able to do, and we're reviewing and revising our collaborative teams to follow a professional learning community format, focusing on data. What do we want students to know? How do we know whether they know it? What do we do when they, when they don't? We also spent a lot of time talking about our STEAM integration. All of our classes are integrating STEAM activities at least once a month, as evidenced by their curriculum maps, but we also have our media specialist tech integrator is working with individual classrooms to integrate STEAM activities into a content area. She does either a half-day or a whole day. She did something with first grade on light heat and sound with different stations that had STEAM activities. We've done coding activities for all students. Next Friday, we have a field trip for all students to the Newport Earth Center for the Black and White exhibit, so lots of different STEAM activities happening. Also, our staff has been working all year with a math consultant to improve and enhance our math instruction, and we're planning math and science evening events for the spring. And then the rest of the handout gives you information about the other progress that we can make toward our strategic plan goals.
Questions for Jody from our board?
No, it's great to see the STEAM call-out and frequency accelerating so much just from, you know, a couple of years ago.
Okay, okay, I'm working on it.
Yeah, it's great.
And I think, Sean, you're taking the balance?
Yes. Similar to, to Jody, we made great use on our professional development day. Again, we're broken in a couple areas. Competencies, fortunately, we're a little ahead of schedule right now for what our strategic plan has, but we do have time for teachers to review existing ones and for new courses, work on developing competencies. A second group is really working on our, working on our supportive classes, our response to intervention, you know, pieces, and one big step that they have made, we have English skills and math essential classes, which are very much support classes, and the teachers have felt that the grading is actually in some cases gotten in the way of the purpose of the class, and so one of the things that we've done is for those individualized classes and those skills building classes, gone to a task fail model, so there's not as much attention on the grading order, because the support's really intended to help them in a class that would have more grading. So we've made a lot of progress on that. Another group has been working on advisory. You know, certainly one goal of the advisory group is to increase discussions with social emotional awareness. Judge Broderick helped tremendously with that, and we're still in discussions about the possibility of going to a mixed age advisory right now. Seniors earn advisory, juniors earn advisory, et cetera. So working into a system where you have ninety through twelve graders mixed in advisories and the seventh and eighth graders mixed in advisories as well. The groups have been firm on the sixth grade with the transition here, not to have them mixed in, but we're in those discussion pieces. They're also working a lot with the scheduling group on if the schedule changes, what does that mean for the advisory? You know, right now it's essentially ten minutes a day. Do we go to a format where it's longer, you know, each day? Do we go to a format where it's an activity block that meets on a weekly basis? So there's going to need to be, as we move forward, some more interactions with those two groups. We have a feedback group, and there's going to be a pilot group of teachers who have developed a series of questions that have completed that survey, and that will go out in February. And then we also had our STEAM team meet and our course offerings for next, for this semester. It could just be done, some of the new courses we have are game design and automation and electronics course, and we've talked a lot with Mr. McDonald just on next year, making some of those classes more accessible to being, to not having the introduction course be mandatory, which would create more flexibility with our schedules. So again, this need to help with the schedule. And those were primarily the five groups that have been meeting, and I think we're on schedule for right now, where we were trying to be and move forward to the rest of the year, making progress on goals that we set.
Questions from the board? No. All right, thank you so much. Next on the agenda will be action items, and the first action item is SMHS stipend positions. And in your packet, either online or mine's in front, are the Sunapee Middle High School extracurricular stipends for winter sports, extracurricular stipends, and spring sports.
Could I ask that you do not approve the spring sports at this time? That you just take the winter extracurricular stipends, and I'll bring the spring sports back to you in a month.
Sure.
I have a motion to approve the stipend for the winter sports and extracurricular stipends and leave out the spring sports.
Motion made by Jesse.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ed. Any discussion on this? No?